Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under a invisible liberty and justice.
Carl Adelfrius.
Here.
John Creams.
Here.
Tom Bratton.
Here.
Scott Lathan.
Here.
Brian Tobin. In the event of an emergency, everyone is advised that they may exit this room from the one side door which leads directly into the parking lot. In the event of an emergency, everyone is asked to move away from the building and do not attempt to leave in your automobiles since this may cause traffic problems and block incoming emergency vehicles. Thank you. Our first item is our first hearing of visitors. At this time, we ask comments and questions be kept to agenda items only. Would anyone care to address the board at this time? And if you do, you can just step up to the podium over there and just state your name.
Chuck moves away.
Okay. Brings us to our consent agenda, which is the approval of our minutes.
Is this in time to bring up any questions regarding the agenda?
No, this is our agenda items only. The second hearing is for all other items.
I'm sorry, do you have the copies?
They're right on the table.
He's got the copies of the agenda over there.
Mrs. Hoffner, he has them.
Okay.
Okay, I'll give you just a second so you can look at it. I'm sorry, I forgot everything.
No worries.
No worries. Okay. So that brings us to our consent agenda, which is to approve our minutes of our July 5th reorganization meeting, our financial matters, which include the schedule of our bills, our treasurer's report from the month of June, our monthly budget status report from the month of June, transfers, our extracurricular activity fund from the month of June, contracts, and our CSE recommendations. Are there any questions or comments on the consent agenda? I do have one. Mr. Scheid, there's a big transfer for tuition for, I don't know, I guess maybe it's Bosie Services. I just didn't know if it was a student that came late to the district, maybe? It's this one. I mean, you can just get back to us on it if you could, maybe email us, that would be great.
Okay, the Bosie tuition, that's where the money came from?
I can't tell because it's black on the top where it's credited and where it's debited from.
So Chuck, she's talking about 3161.
3161?
Yeah.
Right, that was just, we were short in some of those, like the insurance, the central data process.
Okay. And it was for the year end?
The year end.
Okay, that's what I thought, I just wanted clarification. Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All business. Dr. Morrow?
So it's been a, it's been a hot start to the summer. A lot of work going on around the district, you know, as you can tell coming down the halls, you know, they're doing work on the elementary floors. You know, it's great that our voters approved the work on the boilers for our buildings, but that work takes approximately 12 to 18 months, so that won't be done until next summer, possibly even the summer after. Boilers the size in this building, you know, take a great deal of time to get done. But the guys are working hard. Our summer program, the summer enrichment camp that's run through the grant that we had, was very well attended, similar to the past couple of years. Their last day is tomorrow, where they're doing water slides and water balloons and tie dye shirts and, you know, I've been over there, I've been over there numerous days, and it's really nice to see the kids just running around and doing STEM activities and STEAM activities and blowing up watermelons with rubber bands and, you know, and music class and sports class. Mr. Sinclair works at it. I see him out on the field in the 90-degree heat with the kids every time I go over there. So it's really nice to see. So the summer, although it's going quicker than most people would like, is moving along really very nicely.
And did you want to talk to staffings on there as well? Is that?
Um, yes, staff, I'll go right into the superintendent's report.
Right, I'm sorry, I kind of tied that old business and superintendent's report together.
You know what, I think I'll wait on the staffing just till we announce names.
Okay.
You know, okay?
So we can come back to that.
Yeah.
Now we have a grant presentation. Dr. Morrow and Mr. Scheid will take part.
Really, mostly Mr. Scheid.
Mostly Mr. Scheid.
So there's copies of this over here if you like. You know, this gives us an opportunity to present what we've done with a lot of the grant money. Now, the two grants, the Carissa and the rescue grant have some guidelines, that's what it can be used for. You can use it on some type of property things, you can use it on anything that returns students to learning. So for instance, our summer camp where we do STEM and STEAM activities, sports play activities, music activities, arts and crafts activities, you know, we can utilize grants money from either these funds for.
Dr. Morrow, can I talk, you may want to explain because a lot of the folks here probably are unaware that this is COVID money.
Yes.
That's where this came from and that's what this is a result, just a little background on it.
These are both pandemic grants. They have a set of guidelines. We had to put in a, we had to put in a proposal for how we wanted to use that money, which gave us all of two weeks to do that, and the grant was already in place for six months by the time they gave it to us. This first one that Chuck will go through ends in September. We have almost spent it out. We're almost just spending all, you know, some of it was grant property. So for instance, our ventilation system in the auditorium, it needed to be redone, it's about $200,000 project. We were able to do that fully through the grant because ventilation and putting in the higher range filters and things like that, this was allowable in the grant. You can't go out and hire a teacher in the grant because it's not supposed to supplant anything that you're going to continue to use or you're allowing to use. You can't use it to pay for a teacher that could have a salary. You know, some grants you can do that, so like your life or learning grants, you can utilize to pay some of the teacher salaries, like reading teachers. You're not allowed to do any of that in this, these grants. These grants for short term, three years or four years, and they have to be spent out. We really don't know why or how they gave us this money because we compared it surrounding districts and everybody's was different. We were given a generous amount of money in one, almost a million and a half, and the other one was about $5, we spent probably.
My biggest fear is I'm going to get suspended.
$440, yeah.
You know, we've spent probably over three quarters of both grants, and that allowed us to do some other different things with monies that we would have probably utilized if we not had the grant. So Chuck's gonna go through and he's gonna give you a lot of technical stuff, he's gonna really focus on a couple of slides which tells you really what we spent it on and how much, and then we'll take your questions.
Okay, thank you. So the first, as I mentioned, as I mentioned, it was two grants. The first one, the ARP grant, that was the largest grant, so we're eligible for 1.1 million. This is the four-year grant, and again, this is federal funding, we get it through the state. So there's certain guidelines that they look for and procedures that they require for us to file and how we're going to spend the money. So the allowable activities, both grants are fairly similar, but specifically for ARP, it's basically to do anything to improve the schools to return to in-person instruction. Also mainly to address potential or academic impact loss of instructional time, again, when the kids were out of school. We, what we're doing, one of the main things is the summer learning enrichment program after school, so credit recovery. So these are just some of the areas, again, that we're allowed to, and that's where, some of the, this is where we are focusing some of the, our, the budgets for this grant. This also allows for school facility repairs, again, because, so one of the things I think we use to replace the air conditioning, the auditorium, again, just to make the school, the building itself safer and improve it. The other grant, the smaller grant is called the Carissa funding. We're eligible for $524,000 for this one. This grant is the three-year grant, and again, it's also federal funding. These allowable grant activities, supplies, anything to clean the facilities, both grants we used quite a bit for educational technology. So this is where you thought about maybe if the schools are closed, you want to make sure maybe you have enough Chromebooks and everything so kids can access the learning, the classroom. Again, some of the, you know, the repetition, lost instructional time, and again, same thing. So both grants are going to be used to cover our summer enrichment plan and then potentially any after-school supplemental programs. So again, this is in addition to our normal budget, and so it's not something, as was mentioned, that could be used to say off, or you know, to offset teacher salaries or anything. So it's kind of, this is the new slide we've discussed, this grant, several board meetings before. So for the Carissa budget, the $524,000, some of the five major categories that we're spending, summer enrichment, which is the cost for staff for the few hours each day during the summer. We have about $50,000 available that we think we're going to spend this upcoming summer. Educational technology, so that's Chromebooks, touch TVs, as I mentioned, the auditorium AC upgrade, which is completed. And the last we do, and again, any additional help for students, we outsource a contract for a tutoring company. We have some of our pre-K tuition money in there. And like I said, as was mentioned, this money will be fully spent by September. There's procedures we have to go through to fund, to claim the money to get it back, and again, we anticipate to spend 100%. The other, the larger grant, the American Rescue Plan, so again, those are the six or so categories, again, very similar, you see some common areas. Credit recovery, same thing, we're looking at with students where they need to recover for the credits. Now, what, these grants both allow us to move monies around, so like we budgeted credit recovery $108,000. If we don't anticipate to spend the full 108, we're allowed to move the money to other appropriate categories. The elementary had problems with their unit vent controls, so this is a nice, again, one-shot deal where we were able to spend over the $500,000 to be able to make sure each room's temperature controls works properly, and again, to make things comfortable for the students and the staff. And same things, again, the scope, which is the pre-K program tutoring, again, we basically spent half of it so far, and again, it's just, it's, this grant, again, this, this one is due the following year, you know, we're well over half done. So once the Carissa grant is fully done, we're going, we'll concentrate to make sure what's the plan for the rest of the, the next 12 months or so for this grant.
Mr. Scheid, do we spend the money and then we get reimbursed?
Correct. We spend the money, then we get reimbursed. You know, like the Carissa grant, I've always done, I'll say, three budget amendments, which means, again, you know, sometimes you budget $20,000 for an item and it's maybe, it turns out we think we're going to spend 25, so we're allowed to amend it. It's always going to be in those same general categories, but right, we typically will, you know, we spend the money and we get reimbursed soon thereafter.
Thank you.
Same thing, I'm not going to go through in details the timeline, as I mentioned earlier, again, it talks about the due dates, we could, Carissa, again, that's coming up in the next month or couple of months, and then the rescue plan, which will be next year. And of course, any contact. So again, a lot of the, the purpose of this is to make sure, is there any community input, any comments, questions, anything, where we can kind of make sure we're gearing these monies to maybe the area that needs it. So I think at this point, we'll take any questions, or so, you know, any comment, you know, any questions on the grants?
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Any board members?
So I can see UPK, we grant funded, how do we use it for that? Do we foot the bill for that, or is that?
How is the?
There's a specific UPK grant. Now, in the past, what we did is we had a lottery, we took a certain number of people and we told the rest that they couldn't come, because the grant only covers a certain amount of kids, it does not cover the number of students that we've had in it for the last couple of years. There are multiple other grants, not just these, but some of the title grants that allow you to use UPK funding. So we don't, you know, all of our UPK is funded by grant money. We spend more than just the UPK grant. So we get, say, $54,000 from UPK?
Correct, right.
Yeah, we get $54,000. There's a number of them in there, it's hard to kind of remember them all, but we get $54,000 from a UPK grant, probably cost us, you know, more than that to run our two UPK classes. So what would have happened in the past is, the first 18 people that signed up would get in and everybody else would be told, "Sorry, you know, you can't, have to go to UPK somewhere else." Because we have this different grant money, we have not had to turn anybody away for three years. We've been, we've had two classes instead of one, we've run them not with, you know, if you didn't have exactly 36, then you couldn't run it, you couldn't pay for it because they needed 18 to form the class. So, you know, when you see UPK in this particular grant, or if we utilize some of our title grant monies for it, it's so we can provide UPK for everybody that wants to be in it. You know, it's harder and harder to get childcare out here, which you guys don't need me to tell you. But we have tried to make a concerted effort to not have to turn anybody away, and we're able to utilize the grant funds. It's, you know, these presentations are great, when you look at all these things, they're absolutely wonderful, but you'd be surprised at how difficult it is to spend, you know, one and a half million dollars in a way that they tell you you have to spend. There's a lot of other ways we'd love to spend it, but you can't, you know, you're not allowed to. It can only be done in certain ways within their grant, and surprisingly, it's difficult. And I believe we should spend every penny of it. You know, it's money, although it's not necessarily money that comes from our taxes that are charged in this community or our state funding, it's money that comes from taxes that you all have paid for many years, so I think we're obligated to spend every cent of it. But it is a lot more difficult when they give you a really concise list of what counts and what doesn't count. And the federal grants are twice as tight as the state grants. The more difficult, like, we will have to justify everything, which we can, we've counted all of it, to get funded back, you know, the monies. We'll have to supply all the timesheets and exactly what was.
Will we have to go back to the UPK? We have till next year to spend that one?
We don't, we don't have to worry about it for at least another year after next year.
Another year, the year after next year.
But, you know, we're also, you know, I mean, we have other grant funding.
That we can use for that.
We can use some title grant monies. We're not far off.
Okay.
Like, we didn't turn away 25, 30, you know, I worked in a district where we had 400 people sign up for 250 spots, we turned 150 away a year. We were never in that position here. We turned away two, or three, or four, or five, you know. So we did turn away. We had 28 last year, I think it was, and we only took 18, so we would have turned, we only put 18 in a class typically. So, you know, the goal is that we will be able to accommodate everybody. It's very, you know, some of the childcare providers that existed when I came here three years ago, they're non-existent, the UPK providers. So we're looking to try to provide that, you know, for any, you know, any student that needs it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Chuck.
That brings us to personnel. We have employees entering the district full-time permanent. William Fujita, music teacher, effective August 30th, 2023. Employees entering the district full-time temporary, Helen Bannon, principal office assistant contingent appointment, effective August 16th, 2023. And Karen Kowalski is a substitute principal office assistant and music coordinator, Carl Himmelman. Because I have a family member on this personnel agenda, I will have to abstain from this vote. Is there a motion to accept?
I have a quick, I have a quick question.
Yeah, of course.
Mr. Fujita has experience, is that right?
Seven years.
Seven years. So he's, he's starting out at a higher salary level, I assume?
Yes.
Okay. And you're comfortable with that?
Very.
And you think his experience will be beneficial, obviously, than taking someone straight out of?
I think his experience and his diverse teaching ability, you know, he is a, he's sitting with us now. You know, he, you know, he not only was an orchestra student here, and he is an orchestra teacher now, he was also a band student here, and he has taught band, and he has also taught general music and was a choral student here. So, you know, all of those create a scenario where, you know, you know, he's, he's an excellent candidate for the position.
Is there a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendations?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstained? Not because I'm not thrilled, just because I had to. That brings us to committee reports. Finance, Brian is not here this evening, but I don't think there's anything anyway, not till the fall. Building committee?
No.
Policies?
We're meeting this month.
Did, somebody's going to set out dates, right? Okay. I'll try and be flexible, I know your schedule's, mine's more flexible than yours is, whatever works for you. New business? Anybody have any new business? In our August meeting, we're going to do a walk through of the campuses before the opening of school grade.
Before we open.
Great. That brings us to our second hearing of visitors, which is why most of you folks are probably here. So at this time, feel free to come up, entertain any questions or comments about school matters in general. I just ask you to step up to the microphone over there and please give us your name.
You might have to raise that a little bit.
It's on now, right?
Hopefully everybody can hear me. Thomas Hudgens, I know some are most of EIs, but if you don't know him, I've got two kids in the elementary school. I was hoping, Dr. Morrow, you could tell us the plan for replacing the band teachers, since it sounds like we have a new orchestra teacher, is that correct?
Yeah. New music teacher.
It's a music.
Well, so could you tell us the plan for replacing the two positions that were vacated?
Yeah, so at this point in time, we've added, Mr. Himmelman will be doing band in both buildings. He was a 1.0 teacher, he is now going to be a 1.2 teacher. So he, so we, teachers teach five periods a day on the secondary level, except for about 25 of ours that teach a sixth period, because they have a nine-period day, teaching day, plus homeroom, plus advisory. You know, so Mr. Himmelman will be picking up an extra period, and he will be the band conductor in the, he'll be our band conductor, similar to the way Will will be our orchestra conductor, straight through, three to 12. He will also pick up lessons because they don't do an ensemble group every day. You know, then we are looking at our elementary music teacher schedules because, you know, we're down. We used to have 30 sections of classes, we now have 16 sections of classes. So there is space in people's schedules, and then we posted a part-time position, which we already have applicants for, two of whom I've spoken to, and we'll be utilizing the part-time person to fill out the remainder of whatever lessons we need.
Okay, so point two to Carl, is that right?
So lessons, we're looking at replacing the 1.0 position, which was a diminished 1.0, because that position acted as our chair, which meant they had some in-day meetings and things like that that they went to. We're looking at replacing it with a .8 worth of teachers. So really, the decrease in teaching staff is point two. Do you want me to let go through it so it's a little more explainable or understandable?
I don't, I think that's pretty straightforward math for me. Is it, is there, are there any reasons why you wouldn't just go with a 1.0 for it?
Yeah, our enrollment is down a great deal, and we have a lot of openings in teacher schedules that can teach these things. Our enrollment is continuing to decrease. You know, it's decreased from 2,000, I'll give you exact, I can't remember all the numbers, but in 2,000, we had 958 students. This year, we had 701. When we roll our classes out for the next four years, in 2005, we're looking at 605 students. Our band numbers back in 2014, 15, on the elementary level, were in the 50s and 60s. They were in the 30s and 40s last year, which means our lesson groups are also significantly smaller. We just don't have as many of them, you know. So we, we had an elementary teacher retire this year that we didn't replace because we don't have enough sections for them. We had an elementary teacher retire last year that we didn't replace because we don't have enough, you know, our elementary school, when I looked at numbers from 10 years ago, had 495 kids. We'll be under 300 this year, probably. We're at 302, we're 304. So we don't really have the enrollment to utilize that many teachers. We can still offer all.
Based on, based on what, some, is there like a metric or a standard, like class ratio? For me, this is not my business, obviously, but I think of it like class size.
We don't go on that ratio. Where, our ratio is significantly lower than the ratios, you know, we don't, we run music groups smaller than a lot of other places do because we just don't have as many kids in certain areas. So we run AP classes smaller than other places do because otherwise, we can't run AP, like, if we don't run an AP class with seven kids, which doesn't run in other districts, we wouldn't be able to run AP class. But when you only have a graduating class of 60, it's reasonable to only have seven that are taking an AP class. So, you know, there is no real matrix for exactly how many. If there was, we would probably have to cut positions, and we're not really looking at cutting people. So the elementary positions that I mentioned that we didn't replace, we've been able to downsize by eliminating six periods in the secondary school and by eliminating retired positions in the elementary school. And in one case, we did access one teacher, she was a second-year teacher with us, my first year here. But again, we didn't have a class for her, you know, we didn't, we didn't have the number of sections, so.
Able to downsize, is that?
We've been able to downsize our teaching staff in consistence with our population of students without accessing people and putting them out of work.
Through attrition, essentially.
Yes.
You know, we're not, we're trying to match.
We're not looking to fight. Oh, we're not, we're not trying. When opportunity, when someone retires in any area, we do an evaluation of what they taught, how much they taught, and what our need is in that area. We do it for everything. For instance, we did it for orchestra. You know, there was no possible way to, our orchestra teacher was teaching a 1.2 schedule. It couldn't be picked up, you know, by, by anybody. So we hired a 1.2 orchestra teacher, full-time, plus a sixth period.
Not too many years ago, when the business teacher in the junior, senior high school retired, we did not replace her. There was, we eliminated, and other teachers took some of the subjects that she, that she, if I'm not mistaken, that was maybe four or five years ago.
We have a teacher that teaches virtual enterprise.
So that's, I think, what we're trying to say.
So I, all that, the ratios, and obviously, we all see that enrollment is down. I'm just curious if, if the philosophy is to take the fact that enrollment is down and then make changes because enrollment is down? So in other words, when enrollment drops, maybe we don't replace or replace at the same 1.0 or .8, just to match that? Is it because of, again, is it because of a metric or standard, or is it because of concerns about the budget? Is like, are there budget constraints that are driving this also?
This wasn't really, listen, budgetary, my obligation as the superintendent is to look at everything we spend every year. Every program we purchase, every piece of software, we evaluate them all, and when we're paying $8,000 for a piece of software that we don't use, we get rid of it. When we have one software that could service five classes, yet we have, you know, we don't need that one, we need, say, two, we buy another one. When we have two that services five classes and we can do it with one, we eliminate one. So there, there, I mean, everything is, everything has impact on budget. The budget is not driving how many teachers we have.
So the decision to not replace Renee full-time is not budgetary?
No, it was not. The, the decision to not replace the elementary teacher was not budgetary. Just don't have enough kids. Unless we want to have classes of six and 12, and like, we don't, we have classes, we have grade levels where we have classes of 18 kids, you know.
So that's, that's fair. I think last meeting, you said that there won't be any changes, the intent is not to cutting anything from the program. How are you planning to evaluate and measure that, just to confirm that that doesn't happen?
Well, I mean, just like we do every year, like, I can tell you what the plan is, can I tell you in a year from now, we're going to say, "Hey, that worked great"? You know, I can't. We will look at, you know, the performance of our groups, we will rely on people like Mr. Himmelman, who's working with both levels, you know, Mr. Fujita, that, you know, we will meet with them and talk with them about, you know, their groups and how they work. We survey parents on a regular, and kids, on a regular basis, you know. So we, we will evaluate, you know, and I can't tell you that our music program, I can't tell you what any of our programs will look like 10 years from now. You know, they, it may be that in a year, we look at it and say, you know, You know, they, it may be that in a year, we look at it and say, you know, we don't need this much now. It could be in a year that we need more and we need to look at it differently.
I volunteer to help, help you evaluate it. I have a son who's in band, I have another son who'll be coming into band.
And the expectation is that your son will have everything that was offered to him in the past.
Get the same number of lessons.
Yeah, and that's the expectation. And feel free to reach out to me if you don't get that, because I would love to know. You know, there's no reason to wait.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Would anyone else care to address the board?
Hi, everyone. Dr. Morrow, members of the board, thank you. My name is Glenn Homer. My daughter Scarlett will be starting sixth grade. She's played clarinet in the band since fourth grade and to date, it has been an incredibly enriching experience for her. And she thoroughly enjoys every moment of it. So obviously I have a concern moving forward, is the structure going to remain the same? And I still think I'm not convinced that saying the programs won't change and the quality of instruction and the amount of high-touch learning that the kids get out of the lessons is not going to change. And I think those are two different conversations we should really be thinking about. And, you know, we're, we're all here for the benefit of children, right? I think we can all agree on that. You know, my question to you, Dr. Morrow, is can you with absolute conviction say that with this new structure, the quality of instruction that the kids are going to receive will not change? And there would be no falloff in the amount of lessons, the quality of lessons, and ultimately the quality of the performance that we go and see two times a year?
My crystal ball is not working at the time and I can't, you know, do I believe that's, is that my expectation? Yes. Can I tell you what's going to happen a year from now? No. I, I mean, I, I wish I could, you know? I mean, that would be an interesting thing to do. Nobody can tell me what's going to happen a year from now. You, you received the same email that I saw, didn't you? Like, you said Glenn Homer?
That's right.
July 18th?
I saw the email.
Just so that you understand, I don't know where it came from and I apologize for anybody in this community that received it because it's incredibly derogatory towards our current music teachers, any future music teacher. And most of it is inaccurate or untrue. So I do apologize that you received that. I didn't realize it went out from the Southhold email system. It should never have. And it's a little embarrassing to me, quite honestly. But, you know, your questions based on receiving an email that's disturbing like that, that you never should have received, you know, are completely understandable. If I could tell you what a year would be like, you know, what it would be like a year from now, I would absolutely tell you. My expectation is that, and this is based on 32 years of experience. We're going to have kids that are going to have a much better band experience. We're going to have other kids that won't have as great a band experience, you know? There are kids that, their lessons with Carl, they're going to love Carl because Carl clicks with them. Just like we have three fifth-grade teachers and some kids click wonderfully with their teacher and they love them. And other kids, not as much, and they don't love them as much. But we have three different teachers teaching the same curriculum and our expectation is that those kids will all learn that material. We do it in many, many different areas and in other places, they do it in music frequently. You know, so my expectation is that our professionals will provide our kids with as beneficial an experience as what they're getting now. Can I tell you without, I forget the exact words you said, but can I definitively, without a shadow of a doubt, tell you what will happen next year? I really can't. I wish I could, you know, but I'm, I am unable to tell you that. Can I tell you that we will absolutely look at it and evaluate it as we do everything every year? Yeah, that I can tell you will do, because I, I'll be the one doing it, so I can tell you that.
If you had decided to make the decision to hire an experienced and dedicated band teacher, who would be providing the same type of lessons that the kids have received for the last 20 years from the outgoing band teacher, would you have a, perhaps a different level of confidence or conviction? Because I'm, I'm getting lukewarm at best from you right now.
The answer is no. I, I believe that Will is going to be an outstanding teacher for us. And you know when I'll know whether he is or not? Next year.
And I'm sure he is going to be outstanding and I'm excited about the hire.
I'm excited that you're with us and I think, you know, I spent an hour talking with him and twice on the phone after that. And I think he's going to be a huge asset. But again, I don't have a crystal ball. He's not worked for me prior. I, I don't have the ability with any teacher or employee in anywhere that we hire, telling you what the future is going to bring for them is impossible.
Understood.
Yeah, I can tell you, we try to bring in the best people we possibly can.
And I'm confident that Mr. Fujita is going to be an excellent hire. But could you talk a little more specifically maybe about the thought process that went into hiring a full-time orchestra teacher with less number of instruments to provide lessons to as opposed to a full-time band instructor who has significantly more instruments requiring a much more diversified curriculum?
Yes, we had one orchestra teacher in the entire district, two band teachers. You know, when the orchestra teacher left, we had zero orchestra teachers in the district. Therefore, there was the need to rehire one. We had one band teacher in the district still, so we're utilizing that band teacher K-12. There are more instruments, so the model that was used for orchestra for many years here, which I'm sure 20 years ago, people said wouldn't work because that's just kind of the nature of new things. I don't, I don't believe after meeting with all of my music people that you could say, hey, look, you can do it for orchestra, so you can do it for band. I don't think apples were apples. So we looked at other ways to bring in additional, you know, band instruction. We're doing that with a part-time person and then the utilization of, of another one of our elementary music teachers. Yeah. So that was the reason why orchestra, you know, we had zero orchestra teachers. Had we had two orchestra teachers, I don't know what the answer, you know, like I really don't know what that model would look like because we didn't have that, so I didn't really evaluate it.
Okay. I'd like to touch on enrollment numbers for a minute. I got my hands on some readily available information by just going back to old concert programs, counting the number of kids on the programs, simple math. So I'll share with you what I got. 2018 spring concert, 45 students.
Are you talking elementary?
Yes. Elementary. Fifth and sixth grade, fourth graders included in that because it's a spring concert. 45 students. 2019, band, 43 students. No spring concerts in 2021 because of COVID. Winter concert was the first performance after COVID in 2022. Band had 26 students. Spring concert rebounded in 2022 with 33 students. And by 2023, the concert that was just held in May had 46 students, back up to pre-COVID 2018 numbers. To me, that's not a decline in band participation. Now, if you include enrollment, which I'm sure you are, as the entire number of kids getting lessons, let's just keep in mind, the kids that are invited to play in the band are the most committed, dedicated, and best players of their instruments, correct? And I think those are the kids that we should be putting our money behind. And if the money is there in the budget and we're not hiring out of a fiscal concern, I still have a hard time understanding why we wouldn't allocate those funds to hiring a full-time band teacher. And, you know, honestly, just to, to give a little bit of background, my, my wife and I made the decision to move here full-time when, when our daughter started in kindergarten in 2017. Part of the reason we did so is because of the diverse and strong programs in a lot of areas. You know, we had a lot of options where we could have sent her to school and what decisions we could have made. We chose Southhold. My concern is if we say enrollment is down, and that's, I guess, a matter of argument depending on what numbers you look at, because I don't think enrollment is down. You're creating a self-fulfilling prophecy, right? Enrollment's down, got to cut band. Cut band. People look at that, say, yeah, no, no, Southhold, I'm thinking about moving to Southhold, but cutting band, programs are getting cobbled together. Is this really the place I want to send my kid?
Yeah, yeah. Again, the word cut, I think, is an inaccurate statement.
Well, you're not rehiring a full-time position that's left.
We're not cutting a full-time person, we're not cutting anything for more band programs.
But two leave, one comes in, that's, that's a difference of one.
Yes.
Yes.
And two leaves, 1.8 are added.
You know, it just, this sounds like a lot of administrators speak, honestly, assigning decimals to like what teachers are doing. I mean, I, I, look, two instructors leave, one replaces them. I mean, pretty simple math. I, I absolutely cannot see how our kids are going to receive the same level of instruction. And I absolutely cannot see why you would not make a new hire. The money's there. I believe the need to be there. And it's something that's important to this school and, and really a, an important part of the history and the fabric of the programs of this school. I think it's short-sighted and I think it's going to have far-reaching negative consequences.
Thank you. I, you know, I can.
I will, I will say this, I disagree with you very strongly.
I'd like to hear it because I haven't heard from the board.
If you're unhappy in Southhold, you're free to move somewhere else.
That's a stupid thing to say.
It's not.
Yes, it is.
You're very aggressive, I don't like your tone.
I, I'm. I'm not being aggressive, nobody's being, now I'm being aggressive.
Look, you be aggressive.
Let me get control back of the board meeting, excuse me.
Now I'm being aggressive. I've been very calm and I've been very calmly stating my position.
Disrespect.
I have not been snarky and disrespectful.
If you don't like it, that's too bad.
Your opinion sucks.
All right.
Okay.
All right, that's enough.
I know.
That's enough.
Mr. Homer, do you have anything else you care to say?
I, I just wish I heard a, a better explanation and I wish I had more confidence in your decision-making ability as an administrator.
If you could contact Dr. Morrow, via email, set up an appointment with him and he can better explain it to you and go over more of the history with you. So I'm just going to ask you, if you have nothing further to say, we can give these other folks a chance to come up and speak. Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, Marissa Garcia. Thank you. I have two kids, sixth grade and third grade. Not sure what just happened here, a little alarming. My question is more, if we have a budget that passed and we have a community that's funding a budget, if you're cutting a position, how are you planning on reallocating the funds? Like what sort of programming are you planning on putting that in?
So reallocation of the funds, we're not reallocating the funds to a specific program at this time. It's possible that it could become surplus or roll into next year's budget. If you notice in this year's budget, there was about three quarters of a million dollars that was allocated to the 23, 24 budget that we did not spend in 21, 22. You know, so right now, we keep the two positions that are not being, well, the 1.6 positions that are not being alloc, you know, that are not being placed in case we need to place them. You know, if we have five kids in one grade come, we may have to bump that grade and add a section. You know, we have sections, we have classes of 20. Our number in kindergarten, our board number's 22. So if we have five children in that particular grade that comes, we have to add a section and break the class if it's before the year. So some are kept for that in case we start the year with doing that. And then others roll back into the budget in future years or become reserve funds that are utilized for things like replacing the boilers, like we all just voted on a couple of months ago. So the money is not being taken to be given to anything else.
But if you have, and again, like to Thomas's point, I don't understand fully the whole budgeting process. But if you have money that's earmarked for recurring spend and not deferred maintenance or CapEx or whatever it might be, wouldn't we look, if, if we're not, if, if the decision is made that we're not going to continue, to hire another full-time position, wouldn't we look for additional enrichment? Like to Glenn's point, like let's continue to make this a thriving school? And what else can we do with those funds other than just sort of sitting on them?
Possible in the future. I mean, there are programs that people have come and asked about in the last year and we're going to run pilot after school programs and look to see interest and we've looked at models of other programs. It's possible that monies could end up there. I can't, you know, we're not, the question you asked me is what are we using it for? Right now, we're not using it for, for those things because we don't have.
I'm sorry, I guess you should have asked, how is it evaluated for future, you know, for funding?
So similar to the way we evaluate a lot of our programs, like for instance, we start clubs sometimes using grant money. If we have a large enrollment and a large participation in the club, then we work it into our budget the next year. Sometimes at the expense of a club that really doesn't have much participation. Other times, we, we will actually do a true add because maybe all the 10 clubs just, I'm going to give you made-up numbers, okay? So that it's easier to understand or easier for me to explain. We might have 10 clubs that are running at what we consider good capacity. And we might start an 11th club. Mr. Rush will give me an example of one because we did one this year. What was it? So we started international club, the kids made a pitch for it. We didn't know if we had enough participation. We used grant money for that. Grant money is not supposed to be long-term sustaining of running things. So we utilized grant money for it. We had great participation in it. It didn't minimize any of our other clubs, so then we worked it into our budget for this year. You know, so there are different processes that we use, you know? It's possible, it's possible in a year, you know, we look at it and say, hey, this model's not working. And then we look, you know, at what we have to do for it to work. It's possible in a year or two that we have less kids in, in our program and we don't need a part-time even. You know, like I can't tell what those answers will be, you know? But, you know, then we try to build out a position if we don't still have one, you know, or we return one.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Anyone else? Anybody else care to address the board? And again, feel free to reach out to Dr. Morrow via email or phone at any point as well. He's very receptive to meeting with people.
My name is Carol DeLonge and I am very uncom, not comfortable standing out here, but things do bother me and this position that you've taken does bother me. I'm from the class of 1960. There were 45 of us graduating. And when I graduated in 1960, we probably had the worst music program on the North Fork. Matituck was far superior. But then we had Doug Constant arrive to the elementary school and the program excelled. It was fantastic. Everybody was in awe of Southhold School's music program. To this day, Greenport and Matituck stink. I've had grandchildren in Matituck School and I was so grateful when they quit band and chorus because I didn't have to go and sit in that awful cafeteria environment and listen to them perform. And I didn't have to listen to Scott every Christmas sing the same song that they sang every year. So I was grateful. I am totally in awe of the program that comes from this school. The high school music programs and plays that they put on are compatible to anything I've seen on Broadway. Now, my question to you, have you been to any of the elementary school programs?
Yes.
Because I haven't seen you there.
I'm there.
Good, that's good.
Very quiet. I come in quietly and I try to go under the radar. But yes, I attend most of our productions.
That's, that's good because I really feel that you're doing a disservice to this community and these children by doing what you're doing. That's all I have to say.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. DeLonge. Does anybody else care?
Hi, everyone. I'm Katie Wallace. Seen you, been here before at meetings. My kids are heading into first and third grade. I'd just like to make a comment. As a former band kid myself, I grew up playing the flute, fourth grade. We actually had a teacher retire in our district, a new teacher, teacher came in, Mr. M. He was phenomenal. He taught all of us, inspired us to have a love of music, jazz, rock, really exposed us to what the potential of being in a band can be. Personally, when I started in fourth grade, he recognized early that I had a lot of potential. He spent extra time on lessons with me. He contacted my parents, convinced them to do private instruction, even though that was budgetarily a, a challenge. Helped me get scholarships to go to music camp. I went to music camp all through middle school and high school, if you're familiar with it, the UZAM program, Up Island. And that was a really important experience for me. up island. And that was a really important experience for me, and something I just hope everybody understands about band in particular, is a lot of kids that are in band programs, and this was the case for me, don't necessarily have their place in other places. I was a kid who was never going to play sports before I found band and the connection and community there. There wasn't really a place for me, and I just hope that we're not equating all things to, to say, well, you know, these kids can be in orchestra or chorus. There's something really special and magical about band, and also the performance element. We've talked a lot about lessons. I really care deeply about seeing the performances maintained. The elementary school band performances are amazing, and then they go on to become, like, even more amazing in high school and middle school. And also, by the structure of our district, that middle school starts in seventh grade, it is so important in the elementary that they get that full program experience. And again, to just, you know, think about those kids like me, that band is their place, and we wouldn't want to deprive that, them of that experience. Thank you.
Thank you. And our intent is not to deprive them of any, any of our kids of any experience.
Anyone else? Okay, if I can find my agenda now. That brings us to board member commentary. Mr. Latham?
Speaking as a board member, and a tuba player, and a drum major, and not an athlete, you have to, you've trusted myself and Tom in the last election to represent you. You have to believe that we are working in the best interests of every student in this district. I think the problem that happened here is that a personality and the program are seen as one. We've been saying for several months now, we are not going to cut any instructional opportunities, or lessons, or whatnot. The program is going to look different, but what is being offered is the same, and hopefully, the outcome will be the same. And unfortunately, like, like, the, the, look into the future and say it's going to be the same. Nobody can say that. The best we can do is hire the best people that we can find, which is why we hire a superintendent to do that. And based on who we hire, we'll evaluate the program in a year's time. But I think what's, what's happened here is, is that the, a program and a personality have been so, so entwined, that it's almost like it can't be done any other way. And we're going to try and do it another way, because this, this issue has been foisted upon us. You know, we didn't know that we were going to need a band teacher until May. So it's kind of quick, getting, you know, get, get the applicant, or get the posting out, get the applications and whatnot. But you have, you have my commitment, you have, I can think I can speak for everybody, that we want to have the best program. We all love seeing the elementary band and everything, and we have endeavored to keep the instructional offerings the same. It's, the program's just going to look a little different, so that's all.
Thank you. Dr. Green?
Nothing to say.
Mr. Graham?
I'm going to echo Scott on that. This is my second board meeting, and that was pretty interesting. Thank you all for coming, and we're going to, we're going to do our best. My son's in chorus, so we're not looking to cut anything. It may look different, but we're going to try our damnedest to put the product out there. You can trust me, Carol. That's it.
Thank you. I echo all their thoughts. First of all, I want to thank you all for coming, and I invite you to come to every board meeting, whether you have a gripe or a non-gripe, be involved in our school district. I think what happened here could have been poor communication on many levels, lack of communication on some levels, and some other things. I'm going to speak to the email that some of you parents got, because I was personally called out on this email, which bothers me, but I've got pretty big shoulders. There will be Hamia and Scamia and all of the Miias. There's no, absolutely, I give you my word, that is not going to end. So there are things there that have happened in the past that you're told won't happen. They will continue to happen. We will make sure that those programs happen. Our high school band would not be as excellent if, as it is, if it weren't for the elementary band. Judy Fouchet sat up here as a school board member for so many years, and meeting after meeting after meeting, when we talk about the high school achievements and this and that, she'd always go back to, it's because of what they get in the elementary school. It's because of those elementary teachers. It's because of all of the teachers along the way. So please rest assured that we're not looking to decimate any program. I think poor wording choices were used. As I mentioned, four, five years ago, the business teacher retired, and dare we eliminated her position. And there were parents that came and said, you remember this, Kelly, right? What are you doing? What's going to happen to those kids? Where are they going to get their business acumen from? We made it work, and dare I say, in some cases, Mr. Rush?
Our Rochelle Anderson is one of the best in the country.
Absolutely.
Nationally ranked.
So I ask you to be patient this year. It's probably not going to be perfect, but nothing is perfect. And I think that you'll be surprised, we, you were here several meetings. I so appreciate everybody that advocates for their programs. You were here to advocate because you wanted Spanish. We didn't discount Spanish at the elementary level. We're still trying to figure out a way to incorporate Spanish in the elementary, because we believe in that. It just can't happen overnight, because of many, many reasons. The elementary, I can understand your confusion about 1.2s and 0.8s and 0.4s as far as the staffing levels. It took me years to understand what all that meant, and it's different at the elementary than your junior, senior high school because of the length of the day. I'm sorry I'm talking so long. But Mrs. DeLong, I'm a 1976 graduate of Southhold High School, and our band program was pretty darn good.
It was from 1964 on.
My turn. My turn. My mother graduated here before you did.
Yes.
And you remember her, I'm sure you do.
I do.
I have a picture of her with her clarinet, so I'm going to go back that the band program was pretty good then.
It stuck.
Well, that's your opinion.
John Paul is in charge.
Your opinion. I don't want to get into a back and forth. My point is that we do what we do, and this isn't a reflection on anybody in particular. Will, I welcome you to our district. I'm sorry that you got thrown into this fray in this evening. Will is my nephew. That's why I, and I wouldn't have brought that out if it wasn't for tonight. I stayed out of it. I had nothing to do with it, they can all tell you. Mr. Rush, Mrs. O'Neill, Dr. Morrow, I said, keep me, keep me out of this one. I want no part of this. Part of me, part of me kind of said, I hope he doesn't accept this position, because I don't want there to be any, any sense of people thinking it's nepotism. And we can rest assured, who I really feel, feel sorry for is his sister, who's going to be a senior. So I welcome you to our staff, like we welcome all of our employees to the district. And as I said, please keep coming to meetings, please stay involved, but I ask you to be positive. I ask you to give it a shot. My kids were in the band. My kids were the, my youngest son was in the first orchestra there was when Mrs. Graffle came to the district. And I went to the concert, and I literally was behind the seat, because it was the worst thing I've ever heard. We said, oh my God, it was, it was, I wish we had a video of it, because it was painful to sit through. And then the next year got a little better. Then it got a little better. And dang, it got really, really, really good. So orchestra started painful, and it just grew, and it grew, as did band, as did chorus, as do all of them. Our musical productions will still be fabulous, because we have wonderful staff members here that participate in all of these programs. They will do it. They will make sure that our students, your kids, have the same things that my kids had, that you had, that your kids had, that Will's kids will have one day. Sorry, sorry, I just, I feel passionate, and I don't want any of you guys to take anything personally. This wasn't looked at as a, let's get the music program, let's destroy the music program, you know. Dr. Green often says, we could threaten to cut math and science, and nobody will show up to a board meeting. But usually, if we threaten to cut athletics as one, we can fill in an auditorium. So it's refreshing to see the passion for music. I respect that passion. I respect anybody that advocates for what they believe in. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Thank you. Thank you for coming. See you in August. We need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
And so a second to that motion. All in favor?
Aye.